It's a money grab and I get it.
These cameras are a facade. They're projected as being for the safety of the children. However, if it's for the safety of the children, why are they running them all day long? That it's all smoke and mirrors to make money for the company and to make money for the city.
It's not about catching people in a 15 mile an hour speed zone because at 15 miles an hour, nobody's going more than tops 20. This is about the rest of the day.
Welcome to Margate, slow the hell down. We're gonna vote on something when the chief's not here, our traffic officer's not here. Totally wrong.
This was passed for children in school zones. That's how this whole thing got through was school zones. You guys are talking about speeding everywhere that isn't a school zone. It got touted and projected as being for the safety of children in school zones.
Sounds right.
That's how it got.
Okay.
Sounds, sounds right.
Will you stop interrupting me, please?
Okay.
7A ordinance, second reading.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Item 7A is an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Margate, Florida, amending the city's Code of Ordinances by amending Chapter 33, Police and Law Enforcement, Offenses and Miscellaneous Provisions, Article 6, Traffic Control by enacting a new Section 33-73 entitled "Speed Detection Systems in School Zones" to provide for purpose and intent definitions, providing for the authorization to use school speed limit detection systems, a determination of safety need, and the implementation of speed limit detection systems in school zones, providing for a local hearing officer to hear appeals, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, providing for codification, and providing an effective date. This ordinance is before you for second reading this evening, and a public hearing has been scheduled at this time.
So do you want us to bring it forward and then do the public hearing? Or how do you want us to do it?
You would typically make a motion in second, have public comment and discussion.
So what's the wish of the commission?
Motion to approve.
Second for discussion.
Okay.
It's my intent to not have an incredible amount of back and forth on this. We, I don't want to say we've spoke to this at nauseam because we're talking about safety, but for lack of better terms, it's, it's been talked about a lot. You'll hear it's a money grab and I, I get it. I, I understand how that could be perceived. I just wanted to lay some facts on the table. First of all, the, the law, you know, people talk about using it here, there. The law only allows us to use it in school zones, number one. Number two, a study has to be done and it has to be shown that there is a problem. Multiple studies have been done, not just by the speed companies themselves, multiple speed companies, but also our police department. They have identified a speeding problem in the schools. Multiple studies have been done, not just by the speed companies themselves, but also our police department. They have identified a speeding problem in the schools. In my opinion, and I'm not knocking on our police, they do an incredible job. I just complimented some of them tonight. But in my opinion, we haven't given out over a course of a year enough tickets to even put a dent in the, in the problem. You know, I know in the past, red light cameras have been gotchas. I've gotten them. You, you, you stop, it's Sunday, there's no one on the road. You stop to a snail crawl, I know, speeding, speeding, you didn't stop, you didn't. It was a gotcha, right? I stopped, I didn't completely stop, I stopped. This is different. You're not gonna get a ticket for going one mile an hour over. I drive through school zones every morning and yeah, I look down and it's 15 and I'm going 18, right? I immediately let go of the gas, I go back down to 15 miles an hour. You're not gonna get a ticket for that. You have to be going at least 11 miles an hour over. This is the, yes, the, the number one goal is safety. And I'll go into some of the facts of where this has been implemented. But the number one goal is safety. Yes, there is a residual benefit to that. There is going to be income that's generated from it. Absolutely. That income can be used for public safety. And actually, it can only be used for public safety. Most of the people that spoke that were opposed to it in the same sentence said that we need more police out there, which I agree with. We don't have the money to put a officer at every location every single day, whereas cameras would be there. As far as the revenue, we could pay to put extra officers out there and firefighters and license plate readers and all the other public safety technology with the revenue from this. Again, it's for people that are speeding, going at least 11 miles an hour over. This is not going 2, 3, 5 miles an hour over. This is not about picking a company tonight. This is simply about putting an ordinance on the books that would allow us in the future, if we wanted to implement this. This is one of those instances where I do believe in letting some of the cities be the guinea pig and let's see how things plan out. But I don't want to be too far behind that if things do work out, that we're now playing this catch up. So to me, I don't see the harm or foul in passing the ordinance and then let's sit back and let's see what's, what happens. I'm not gonna mention the company's name, I don't think it's fair, but I did get some statistics back. There are three program updates, Pinecrest, South Miami, and High Springs. They all demonstrated 90% reductions in speeding. Approximately 90% of those have not received a second violation. An overwhelming majority of the violators are not local. When these programs are done, the driver behavior has changed. And for what it's worth, Plantation, Coconut Creek, Deerfield have all, I'm not gonna mention the company, but it's just one example of those cities that have gone the extra step.
And I just heard that Coconut Creek was doing.
Coconut Creek, correct. But I believe they wanted to wait until the first of the year to implement. I know there had been some reports that there were some count, you know, where they voted to implement them, but then they didn't. But it has to do with they want to roll out all the schools at once versus just do one at a time. So each city is looked at on a case by case basis.
Do you remember when we talked about it to start with? I said, let's wait until almost the end of the school year to see what would have been in the city of Margate.
I'll close with this, like I said before, we've talked about this a lot. I believe the mayor is gonna be the swing vote on this. I know at the last meeting, it sounded like you had a change of heart and something, I don't want to say verbatim, but your kind of quote was that we, we have a speeding problem and we don't want to keep doing the same thing again. So let's do something different. So I hope, I hope you still have that same opinion. I hope we pass the ordinance and we'll sit back and see how this plays out with the other cities as the guinea pig. That's it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not gonna be voting for this. And, and, and I don't think we actually should vote for the ordinance tonight. Because what it's doing, it's a perception. We're letting the people know that this is something we want to do. And I, I understand all the points that the vice mayor made, they're all great points. You know, anytime you can enhance safety, you know, it, it's a great point. But the problems, the last two problems that we had, and I'll say it again, in the city was over by Renaissance, which isn't even in Margate. But right there, there was an incident where a young boy got hit, not because the person was speeding, it's because of awareness. So I think if we put funding towards awareness, putting signs out, because I think we're all probably guilty, we're, we're caught in that section and we don't know it and we're speeding. And then when we find out, you know, we see the light, we slow down. I mean, if you're actually speeding with the light on and you ignore it, it's different. And the red light cameras, you know, that was kind of like a gotcha where you, you're like, you know what? Maybe I'll make it, maybe they won't get it on video and this and that. But this is, is totally different. You know, I'm, I'm not gonna talk about the money grab on this, but there's already been other counties that implemented this and they're taking it out already. Now, I don't agree with this and I don't agree with the ordinance. I don't want to say rushed through because I do feel that we should be ready if we're gonna do something. But being that I'm not for this, I don't think that we should rush this. We can always put this in play when we find out what other cities are doing, how it's working out. But if you look at the past history of, I forgot the county that took it out, they took it out. It, it wasn't working. And, you know, I think our police do a great job. And as far as the tickets, they could probably write 50 to 100 tickets a day. I think we can all agree to that. But is that what we want? Do we want to be known as the city where, you know, you drive through Margate, you're gonna get a ticket? Luckily, we haven't had major accidents with children in school zones. And I think the, when we talked about this the last time, there weren't many that, there weren't many incidents on Atlantic Boulevard. So I'm not gonna talk about the money grab, which I do think this is, but I just think we should hold up on it and just see. I was working with other cities and we need to have more visual lighting, you know, car level that you could see to know that you're in the speed zone, or you're in the school zone. And my last question, is this, does this ordinance, or did these companies? Because I haven't talked to any of them, I don't, I only care for them, so. But are any of them doing this non-school hours? Will any of the, the companies do it that aren't during school, let's say drop off and pickup hours?
I don't know if anybody has done that. What I can tell you is that if that's a requirement for like the city to want, it, it completely rearranges the structure of the funding. Meaning they won't provide, you know, the cameras at, at no cost, the installation. It, it becomes more of a cost to the city as opposed to a funded and revenue producing program.
Gotcha. So the point I'm making is that the other cities, from when I've been asked if you can regulate the hours, they won't do it. They're gonna tell you they want to do it all day long, even when there's no kids walking across the street. So you want to look at it, that's however you want to look at it. Will it bring the city in money? 100%, guaranteed it'll bring in money. But is it gonna be doing the right purpose for our city and our residents? So I talked to the residents, I'm not, I don't know too many that are for this, but I'll hear it tonight. But like I'm saying right now, what I've been told, I'm, I'm not for it, so that's it, thank you.
Commissioner Simone.
Thank you. I am not for this at all. I do believe these cameras are a facade. They're projected as being for the safety of the children. However, it's, if it's for the safety of the children, why are they running them all day long? So this is money for the company and it is money for the city. And it was said here tonight, if it's not about money, it was stated here tonight, well, look at all the things we can do when we get the revenue from these cameras. So if it's not about the money, why are you saying, look at all the things we can do with the money that we get from these cameras? I don't see the harm in waiting. What is the rush to go forward with this? If they are working and we want to go forward, we can always put a resolution, takes two readings, and put a resolution together and move forward with it. But somebody said tonight, no harm, no foul in doing this? Well, I'm saying the opposite. No harm, no foul in waiting. A lot of this is not for safety. You know, driver awareness. You need to make driver awareness and that's gonna prevent. In my agenda review, the city manager stated that he went to Margate Middle School and sat there with the police officers during the school time for quite a bit of time. It's almost impossible unless you're probably the first person in line, then yes, you may be speeding because of light changes and you take off and you may not even realize that you're still in a school zone. So lighting is definitely important to make drivers more aware. But he said the whole time he was out there, there was only two, maybe three cars that were speeding. When you are in a school safety zone, it's hard to speed because everybody is going 15 miles an hour. So how are you going to speed past them when you've got two lanes of traffic, three lanes of traffic, and everybody is going 15 miles an hour? Except if you're the first person in line, then yes, you may be the one speeding. But I, I'm not for this. I do think that it's all smoke and mirrors to make money for the company and to make money for the city. And I hope it does not pass tonight because there's no harm in waiting. Why are we rushing to put a resolution? Let's wait and see.
Commissioner Cazian.
Yeah. I just want to comment on what the vice mayor had said. He had given statistics of what's been. And what's been is that 90% of the people who got a ticket haven't done it a second time. I consider that awareness. Also, also.
Vice Mayor, is that what you said, 90% of the people? That received the ticket, never received another one?
They saw a 90% reduction.
That's, that's a little different than what he said.
Well, I don't know, but of that so far, 90% of those have not repeated.
I actually heard what he said, I was listening. And, and I just want to get a clarification about people saying, all day, all day, all day, all day. We're only talking about all school day.
While, while school is in session.
Not all day, but all school day.
Right, correct, while school is in session.
So it's not in the times that there's not school. It's only during times that there is school. And it's not working when there's no school. Okay.
You done?
That's it.
I guess I'm a swing vote.
I will.
Well, actually, I'll wait for public comment. So if anyone sitting in the audience would like to come up and say something, please do so.
First of all, I'm totally against these lights or these cameras. Are they gonna be on just during school zones? Are they gonna be shut off during summer? Because kids aren't gonna be in school. Because from what I read right here, it says some Florida cities are making a killing. That's a money grab. Says in the tiny city in West Miami, the sound of red light cameras shutters might as well be like a cash register. And that's what you're trying to do in Margate. We, we don't need these. It says every month, this town of 7,000 residents snaps and they make $1.45 million in a year. So that's what you want to do to our city? You want to make people, you guys are sitting there saying, we're gonna do downtown and we want people to come to Margate. Now you're gonna drive them out. Because if they're gonna go through here and get tickets, they're gonna say, I ain't even going to Margate anymore. Might as well forget you downtown.
So when they drive through Coconut Creek, they'll not get their ticket on the way here?
Right. Those people are getting rid of them already.
Hang on a minute. Okay.
Thank you. I'm aware of eight states where the speed cameras are banned entirely, including school zones. Maine, New Hampshire, New Jersey, South Carolina, Texas, West Virginia, Wisconsin, and Mississippi. And now you can add Ohio. After the governor signed a bill last month that bans speed cameras in counties and townships, relying on these cameras to give drivers speeding tickets in the guise of school safety is a misnomer because what it actually does is give drivers a license to speed through school zones as long as they don't go more than 10 miles per hour over the school zone speed limit. The threshold is set very high to 10 miles per hour when the school zone's only 15 miles per hour. And while these cameras can operate during the day when school is in session, the threshold remains 10 miles per hour when the speed limit is raised 20 miles per hour more to 35. A much smaller difference in speed than during school zone hours. That's because these speed cameras are not at all intended to catch speeders in school zones as that's not the problem. These cameras' sole purpose is to generate revenue.
It would generate a lot of additional revenue.
By ticketing drivers during non-school zone hours because that's when there are the most amount of speeders. And the camera vendor Red Speed studied back that up as the amount of speeders on Atlantic Boulevard in front of Margate Middle is 13 times more during the day than during the school zone hours. Right here is their stats. You see that big giant jump? That's in the middle of the day. Atlantic West is three times more in school zone, in non-school zone hours than during. This ordinance states that a determination of safety need, determined by who? The commission? Camera vendors? Certainly not the police. The police department did not ask for them. On July 3rd of last year, the police major came up here and told you, quote, "We do not have an issue with speeding in school zones when the lights are flashing."
Major Strang, we don't have an issue speeding in our school zones when the lights are flashing. From somebody who has stood in the school zones countless times, I will tell you, we don't have an issue when those lights are flashing in our school zones.
Officers in school zones are the biggest deterrent.
Officers standing in the school zones are the biggest deterrent.
And out of the tickets issued in school zones, have you gone to look how many were for actually 10 miles over? Instead of a need, these cameras are a want by some commissioners solely to generate revenue.
It's gonna generate revenue for the city.
It would generate a lot of additional revenue.
And to please their donors, the speed camera vendors, particularly Red Speed, who has made multiple generous contributions in the thousands to sit in, three sitting up there. And this does, if this does pass tonight, it will be interesting to see if anyone sitting on the dais in the future brings this back after 2026 because you and the city will find out the hard way that these cameras are not the right way to go. Thank you.
Any other members of public? Hang on a minute.
I am totally against this. Because if we can afford to do this and you're telling us that, well, we can go 11 miles an hour over in a school zone or 10 miles an hour and over in a school zone, is that 10 miles an hour difference gonna save any child getting hit by a car? No. You can hit a child at 15 miles an hour and still kill that child if you run him over. You can do it at 16, 17, and 20 miles an hour. I don't believe this. If we have officers there, then they can write the tickets right there. They can also, if it's a wanted person, when they stop that car, guess what? They got the fugitive now. If it's a stolen vehicle, they've got the stolen car now. But just to have the red lights there and the cameras there and everything else, red light cameras have been banned. You can't use them. You can't even use them in an accident, for an accident, when you're going to court because you have them on Margate Boulevard and Atlantic, and Margate Boulevard and 441. And when we had our accident, we could not use them. So, and then we had officers saying the man was going 45 in a 40 mile an hour zone. Never seen a 35, uh, 40 mile an hours down there. So speeding and telling them, yeah, you can go 10 miles over. So they're gonna go 10 miles an hour over. So you're still not gonna get a ticket. To me, 3 miles an hour over can kill a kid too. So I totally disagree on this and I hope it does not pass.
When this was spoken before, when we talked about this before, I thought I was for the cameras. I thought I said it's safety, it's safety, it's safety. But after doing some research and receiving some information, I say that it is not. What does it matter? Like Commissioner Simone said, when you're going 10 miles an hour in an area, who's gonna go 50? Who's gonna go 30? There's, you have to go with the traffic. You have to, and, and then somebody gets a ticket, it's like three or four, four weeks later? What's the point then? That person is gone. Whatever happened, he did it already. So there's, there's no issue with that. Police presence in school is effective in getting speeders to slow down in school zones as drivers are stopped on the spot and made aware. Lights in the beginning of the area, in the middle of, and in the middle to warn people about it. School zone cameras have been installed throughout Georgia and Florida have already been proven to be unreliable and problematic. The only thing I can see anything positive happening is to have police presence on both sides of the street to catch whoever is going at the moment they're doing it. They do not have to stay there throughout the day, couple of hours in the morning, couple of hours in the afternoon. And if we are giving tickets for people to come, that come through Margate, they deserve the tickets, they're speeding. So don't say, oh, I'm not gonna go through Margate because they're, they give tickets. No. If you come through Margate, go to the speed limit and do what you're supposed to do. If you're going against the law, if you're going against what it is, you deserve a ticket, you get a ticket. Whether you want to come here or not, that's your problem. So I, I am not for the cameras now. I think we can wait and see what the studies show later on. But at this time, let's wait and see. Thank you.
Any other members of public?
It wouldn't be a commission meeting if.
I think the city should open up and give free logic classes because I've never heard so much irrational ill logic in my life. If we pass this, it doesn't hurt because it gives you a pass to negotiate with the vendors. I would trust that the commissioners would have the residents in mind to make sure that when they do negotiate with the vendors, they keep our residents' interests in mind. Listen, the schools, we don't just have schools on Atlantic Boulevard. We have them all over the city. There's a lot of areas where it doesn't make sense for a police patrol, but would make sense for cameras. And I heard, well, if the traffic doesn't allow you to speed, well then, what's the problem? If we're not gonna catch them speeding and the traffic doesn't allow them to speeding, what's wrong with having the cameras? You know, I've never heard such convoluted logic, it's ridiculous. Look, we should pass this resolution now, but we should investigate and do more time negotiating with the vendors to make sure that it does protect our residents' interests, to make sure that we don't have the cameras enacted in off-school time so that it would be a money grab. We don't want a money grab, but we do want safety. And to bring up two anecdotal situations, that doesn't prove anything. What we're, we're trying to prove to prevent something happening in the future, not just because it hasn't happened yet. That it's a poor reasoning and logic to speak against this. So it doesn't hurt to pass it. It gives us a pass card so that we can negotiate with the vendors. It gives us the ability then to make decisions afterwards. Look, if we pass this, we're not just gonna go immediately and start installing cameras. There's, there's gonna have to be negotiations, there's gonna have to be contracts, it's gonna have to be evaluated, it's gonna have to pass by the commission again. So give us a chance to negotiate and it only makes sense to me to have the ability to put in the speed cameras because if we're gonna have speed cameras or speed sensors anywhere, the most important place to have them would be in school zones. That's where they should be. Thank you very much.
Anyone else from the public? You can pull a camera.
I'm gonna go along with the convoluted thinking. And that is to say that I am against this. I'm all for safety, but I don't believe that these cameras are going to do it. As it has been said previously, going one mile an hour, you can hit a child. It's more about paying attention to what's going on. Just today, I, I was in a car. We were at a red light and somebody just went through the red light, not even that it was changing. So it's more about paying attention. It's more about caring about the, the kids. It's more about not being on your cell phone when you're driving, being upset that you're waiting on the car line. Maybe something could be done about the, the car lines and there wouldn't be so much stuff going on over there as far as the safety of the kids are concerned. So I will also say that I believe it's a money grab and I think that we should not waste the money and do this. Thank you.
Any other member of the public? Yes, it's my turn. Oh, Commissioner Cazian, you got your light on.
Oh, sorry.
Say it again, that's what it's on the record.
For clarification purposes, should we decide at a later date, not today, to do this, it won't cost the city a penny. We won't have to spend a penny on it. Just to make it clear. Go ahead.
In terms of the hours of operation during school days, right? The minimum speed limit is 11 over. Now, that doesn't mean that our police won't be there. The reason why cameras are there-
Now, that doesn't mean that our police won't be there. The reason why cameras are there is because police can't be in every spot. And I asked how much it would be to put an officer at every school, every morning, every day of the year. The number is astronomical.
And you did on both sides of the street.
Right, so. The the speed threshold can be adjusted during non flashing hours. I've set it up here during the non flashing hours. I wouldn't mind even upping it because I don't want it to be a gotcha. I don't want it to be a money grab. But the person in a Mustang five oh or a Ninja bike going a hundred miles an hour down Atlantic. I want, I want them caught. And you know what? If it takes a few weeks, sure, I would love for one of our officers to get him right there and then. The reality is. There's, there's apps, there's lasers, there's radars, you see them. It's, it's not hard to speed when you don't see the cops. They can't be everywhere.
Correct.
So the thresholds can be adjusted on those speeds. Um, but I just wanted to clarify, and I'm glad you said something because. Just like people think the downtown's gonna cost us, even though the developer's paying for it, just like that. These vendors would be paying for it. And I think having worked for a law enforcement vendor before being elected. Let me tell you, a company like this just launching, even though some of these companies have been established. Every time you go into a new state or a new country or a new zone, you have to prove yourself through proof of concepts and pilot programs. If we told them, we'll take one camera and we want it to be twenty miles an hour over. And we don't want any cancellation clauses, they're gonna do whatever we ask. Because they wanna be able to put their flag and say, hey, we also service Margate. So all this talk about costs and this and that. They'll do whatever we want right now. And I know that from experience with another product. Wasn't speed cameras, but it was with law enforcement. And half the time they get into a new area, we gave it away, just to prove ourselves.
Uh, as a side note, I wish, I I I lived off Eightieth and Atlantic for over twenty years. And watching cars fly in uh coming after where the Ramblewood diner is. Watch them blow through that light, not go through the light, but go through the light on a green. Coming in at sixty five miles an hour, because it's a forty five on the other side of the road. And they're coming in at fifty five, sixty five, blowing through. Listen, if I had my way. Now, we can have an officer there all the time, because there's many a time there's gonna be, there's an officer there. But they can't be there all the time, and I can tell you that they're coming in flying. They're coming in flying from Coral Springs. And you know what? I would put a camera right there to catch everyone who flew into our city thinking it was okay to fly into Margate. You wanna talk about safety? Um, whoever said it first, that safety in the school zones is a start. But let me tell you something. When I see these cars coming in and just blowing through, when you're at that corner at Eightieth. And Atlantic at the light, waiting for it to change, and cars come flying through like they're at the Indy race. Into a thirty five mile an hour. I'd put cameras everywhere, so. And it's not a money grab. It's a safety thing. Anyone who says it's a money grab, if you have, if you have a ninety percent reduction. Even if you only have an eighty percent reduction. That's eighty percent safer driving than what you had before. How can you be upset about eighty percent safer driving? That's it, I'm done.
Commissioner Rosano.
In closing, I'm gonna say this is all about awareness. It's totally about awareness. You know, you you very. Frequently, you don't see people speeding through a speed zone when everybody's doing ten miles an hour. You don't see a guy bobbing and weaving in and out. And this is a total money grab. I wasn't gonna bring it up, but Elsa, you made a great point. If this is about safety, why are you gonna get a ticket three weeks later? You're not helping the problem right now. And Jonathan, you made a great point. Now you're telling people you can go ten miles an hour for the speed limit. So this is a total money grab. That's all this is, is a money grab. That's why other states are getting rid of it. They won't let it in because it's all about grabbing the money. And the reason why they got away with this, I'm gonna say it again, is because they went up to Tallahassee. They legislated it and they used the kids to put it in schools. Everybody knows there's a speeding problem in every city. Why didn't they just put it and say, you know what, you could put it on a major highway? You could put it here, you could put it there. Why did they do it over here? Because they're using the kids. They're putting that fear factor into people. And I hope you guys don't buy into it, but that's what this is. This is a money grab to the tenth power. Trust me. And to say that we're gonna make money and do what? Buy more, fire, get more cops? It doesn't make any sense. And if you, you lived over there. If you had a problem, you should have called the city manager and said, you know what, this guy's doing sixty five miles an hour over here.
I have, and they put cops there.
And I told people to slow down. Go out there, tell people to slow down. You know what? You've got a problem like that, call the city manager, because that's what you're here for, to protect the safety of the people.
But they can't sit there twenty four hours a day. In the mo- in the moment that car is gone, they come flying in.
Okay, well, let me ask you this. If this is such a big safety issue. Where's our chief of police? Where's our, where's our people that want this supposedly? They're not here. They don't want it. They don't want it. Where are they? Are they gonna come up and say, we need this? No, you know what? Because we don't need it. It's a money grab. Follow the money.
Commissioner.
Follow the speeders.
Commissioner Rosano, it's not your turn. Commissioner Kajiana's not your turn. Commissioner Simone.
So the reason to do this now is so that we have the ability to talk to the vendors. Why do you wanna talk to the vendors unless you know that you want this? Because why are you gonna waste your time and their time to talk to them now? That's a bunch of nonsense. Seriously, you talk about common sense. Why do we have to wait? We can wait and still talk to the vendors when we decide. So why do we wanna do this now? So we can talk to the vendors. Well, the only reason you wanna talk to the vendors is because you want it.
Julian, great point. I had that written down, and I didn't say it. But yeah, we could have talked to the vendors, find out what we want, what we can do, rather than pass this and then find out what we can do. It's, it's, it's ass backwards. Excuse my French.
We actually did meet with them. Maybe some of you guys don't meet with lobbyists and stuff, but I meet with everyone. So I already know what we can and can't do. I just wanna see the results in other cities which have come back pretty overwhelming. I talk loud. It's on.
That was Mike. Nobody could see. Are we done up here?
I'm done.
I'm done.
You sure?
Well, hopefully.
I'm just taking notes, you know. So now it's my turn. Number one, I'm not negotiating with anybody to put up a speed zone, not a red light camera. That's number one. Number two, anybody who knows me knows I'm about changing behavior. Number three. Because I have a really good memory. When Major Stransky stood there, he said, and I quote, if we do this, we'll have to stop everyone.
If this was all about the school safety and the school zone. These cameras would run while those lights are flashing. The problem I have with these cameras is the middle ground of the day. These, this, that house bill states that you can turn these cameras on a half hour before the light starts in the morning for arrival and breakfast programs. And let them run the entire day till a half hour after end of school sessions are finished. So while the school is on, which is when the kids are walking to school, parents are dropping off, it's fifteen miles an hour. So at twenty six miles an hour, you can get a citation. When the light turns off at the end of the school zone, the cameras then start writing tickets at forty six miles an hour.
But not to interrupt, the cities can set that threshold. And I even on the record have said, I would not set it that low. I would set it to make sure you're talking about people drag racing.
They're not gonna wanna set it too high because they are businesses. These is a moneymaker for them as well. They're not gonna want you to say, hey, we want you to run these things at, you know, eleven on Atlantic Boulevard. And set the speed limit on the cameras to sixty five and only get the egregious speeds. Because ultimately, they're losing money in this as well. They're gonna want you to set it supposed to forty six miles an hour. And I'll tell you something right now. Every one of us works in Margate, lives in Margate, drives through Margate. Everybody in this room is gonna get a ticket on Atlantic Boulevard, forty six miles an hour. Everyone of us.
Because he and I had a conversation about that afterwards, because that is basically saying, everybody who goes through that area speeds. He didn't say there wasn't a problem.
Uh, Major Stransky, we don't have an issue speeding in our school zones when the lights are flashing. From somebody who has stood in the school zones countless times, I will tell you, we don't have an issue when those lights are flashing in our school zones.
He said, we'll have to stop everyone. And that really rubbed me the wrong way to hear it, because that means you condone bad behavior. This is about so that we all understand, having a camera eventually, if we ever choose to do this, a half an hour before the kids are dropped off. And then a half an hour straight through the rest of the day to a half an hour after they're picked up. It's the entire time in the school day. So we all understand what, yeah, that's exact. I will also tell you. I will also tell you that if you drive down that area, as I have to, because I live off Atlantic Boulevard. From sixty sixth, where there is a light, through seventy first, which is Rock Island. There is no legal way to cross the street. No legal way, except if you jaywalk.
Most of the time, regardless of where it is in the city, I see pedestrian versus vehicle. Because someone sees somebody crossing the street, but I guess plays chicken with them. And so the reason we have a light on seventy sixth and Atlantic Boulevard is the two people gave their lives. Because the condos there are not gonna walk. Eight blocks to cross the street to walk eight blocks back. I am an, I absolutely believe in change in behavior. I don't wanna dime. I want somebody to stop. I have said a hundred times, if I blow through a stoplight or anything else, anywhere else, I get points on my license. I want points on your license. That makes a difference. I wanna change behavior. So do I agree, I agree with the speeding? I come out on Eightieth Terrace and Atlantic Boulevard. And I wait not only till the light changes from Coral Springs, because that's the next block. I count to ten, because there's always someone going through the light regardless. Does he go from forty five to thirty five? Yes. Why? I have no clue. There's a school a block and a half from me. So there are three school zones where I live, regardless of city. I am every bit for changing behavior. No, it's not okay to go eleven miles over the speed limit. And this is not about catching people in a fifteen mile an hour speed zone, because at fifteen miles an hour, nobody's going more than tops twenty. This is about the rest of the day when normal people go to crossover, whether it's to the little convenience store on sixty sixth. Or sixty fifth, or anywhere else to change behavior. It's not okay for Atlantic Boulevard or Royal Palm, where there have been some horrible accidents. To become a speed zone and allow that even eleven miles an hour is okay. It isn't when it's your car that gets hit. So am I for voting to allow this ordinance to be in place? I'm not meeting with anybody. It's just simply putting it in place? Yes. Did I say originally, I'll watch Sunrise, it already has it. Now that I know Coconut Creek has it, I wanna see. But if we're not stopping people, we have officers there during the pickup and the drop off. But that's not when this is the problem. This is the problem, because everybody's used to doing sixty five down Atlantic Boulevard, just to see if they can make it through. Uh, either Rock Island Road or so. I've been stopped at a light at Rock Island, had somebody go around me and shake my car. That's how fast they were going to go through the light, when the traffic was going the other direction. So I will vote to allow us to put this ordinance in place. I'm not choosing anyone. I'm not meeting with anyone. But I have no problem with it being there. And I I have a problem with people not seeing this about changing behavior. I don't care if we never get a dime. I wanna stop people from blowing through my neighborhood. So at that point, call the roll. Oh, I didn't see your number. Go ahead.
Yeah, again, I'm not gonna say that this is for safety. Go back and look at the last two accidents that were in school zones. They were not speeding. They weren't paying attention. Total money grab. And Arlene, I don't know how you can vote for this. I really don't, especially to put it in place right now. You know, get some facts, let our traffic um major go speak with these companies. From what I heard, they're not too bendable, flexible. They want what they want. They want, they wanna do what they wanna do.
We're not voting for a company, so what's the difference? We never have to.
I understand, but the perspective is. We're gonna vote this to look into talking to a company. This should have been talked to a company. It should have been presented to us. And then say, you know what, guys, do you wanna do an ordinance? Do you wanna do this? And I would say, you know what, I really don't like the way they wanna do it. During all school hours. And if I ask them and they say, you know what, that's the way we have to do it, I wouldn't vote for it. But for sit here and put a, an ordinance in place when you don't have that much information, you haven't met with them, absolutely ridiculous.
I met with them.
I'm not saying you. I'm not saying you. I'm saying the mayor is saying that she wants to put the ordinance in place. For what? We don't even know what the offer is.
You know that nine tenths of the work we do up here is in anticipation of something? It's not running behind the cart, it's running in front of the cart.
If we had a traffic study done, which we probably did, they would have come up here presenting it, saying, you know what, commission? We need a policy set because this is the problem. Everybody's up here is complaining about speeding. You know what, Kale? Put cops out there. Let them give them tickets. That's what the commission wants. That's it. It's speeding. Put it by Arlene's house. That's what they want. Put a sign up that says, welcome to Margate. Slow the hell down. You know, but to sit here and say, you know what, we're gonna vote on something when the chief's not here, our traffic officer's not here, totally wrong. That's it. Good, Rob? Rob Troinsky, not my other neighbor, Rob.
Commissioner Simone.
And again, this was passed for children in school zones. It wasn't passed. That's how this whole thing got through was school zones. You guys are talking about speeding everywhere that isn't a school zone. You're talking about by your house on Atlantic. From Margate, uh, from Ramblewood. From Ramblewood, I know, but going towards Atlantic West, there's no school zone there until you get almost to Atlantic West. So you guys are talking about speeding in that area. There is no school.
That will not have nothing to do with it. I'm just simply saying what it's like to live.
But how did this all come about? Because it got touted and projected as being for the safety of children in school zones.
Sounds right.
That's how it got.
Okay.
Sounds, sounds right.
Will you stop interrupting me, please?
Okay, I'm sorry. I apologize. I apologize. I'm sorry.
So that's how this whole thing came about, was for school. And now they've got everybody hoodwinked into thinking, oh, school safety, school safety. Of course, we're gonna vote for this. It's not about school safety.
I recognize the fact that since it's the whole day, it's more than just school safety, because those kids generally are not out during those times. But I recognize what I see going on when people cross, because unlike major cities, we don't have traffic lights every two blocks. I guarantee you that it would be ver- if I had an anonymous survey, I'd find very few people who actually walked. To stores that didn't tell me they jaywalk. Because they don't wanna walk seven blocks to a light, to walk three blocks back, to walk seven blocks back, to walk to their homes. I guarantee you, there's no one who lives in Oriole one or two who doesn't jaywalk across to get to where the new Publix is gonna be. Because there are too many streets you have to walk down to find the light. That's just human nature, and unfortunately, that's what the state roads are where they don't put enough lights, because it prevents traffic from flowing. You know, so if if indeed it saves somebody from crossing the street illegally, from getting hit by a car. Then I don't have a problem with that either, if if it's in that place where it's allowed. I just look at it different. I'm trying to change behavior. I'm not trying to excuse behavior. Excusing eleven miles an hour is excusing behavior. I don't think eleven miles an, I mean, I would hate to think that people decide to cha- to to set their um. Their odometers to eleven miles an hour. I mean, that's just um. Maybe some of this comes with age. I never sped, so. Not my thing. I can afford to wait a second. I don't, I don't text message people while I'm driving. I don't have a, a phone up there. I, it's just not. Just not important to me to be, to do that. Anyway.
Yeah, I wanna make a motion to table this item.
Okay.
Second.
Please call the roll.
And this is on the motion to table.
Correct, which means there's no more conversation and the roll gets called.
Mr. Rosano?
Yes.
Mr. Kajiana?
No.
Mr. Simone?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sario?
No.
Mayor Schwartz?
No. Now on the original motion.
Mr. Rosano?
No.
Mr. Kajiana?
Yes.
Mr. Simone?
No.
Vice Mayor Sario?
Yes.
Mayor Schwartz?
Yes. Thank you all for coming. Meeting adjourned.